Stepping up just a little, get a little closer to your microphone.
There we go.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, we have before us a unanimous consent agenda.
I would move to approve.
President Hegi, second by Alder Person Garza. Lots of items.
Motion by Elder Person Hegi, seconded by Elder Person Garza, approving the purchase of 1,956 AMI electric meters from Elster Solutions for a cost not to exceed $175,002.24, authorizing and accepting the proposal from municipal well and pump for the rehabilitation of well number 10 for a cost not to exceed $48,930. Authorizing appropriate city officials to enter into an agreement with Altech Industries to purchase a 55-foot bucket truck for a price not to exceed $296,212. Authorizing appropriate city officials to enter into an agreement with Altech Industries to purchase a 60-foot bucket truck for a price not to exceed $298,820. Authorizing the purchase of a new makeup air unit installed by Cornerstone One at a cost not to exceed $36,350. Authorizing the purchase of a Trojan UV Cigna Ultraviolet Disinfection System Malkahay Shaw Water at a cost not to exceed $389,720. And authorizing the purchase of a 2023 John Deere Gator from Midstate Equipment at a cost not to exceed
That is a great deal of money. All that and the unanimous consent agenda, boy, talk about making it an easy vote. Wonderful. Well, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Motion carried. Communications, Lori?
Uh, one thing this evening, discussion and consideration of canceling the second common council meeting in December 2022.
Okay, anybody wanting to show up just before Christmas, or would somebody like to, uh?
I move to approve.
I say against. Motion and, uh, Alder Person Churchy, second.
Motion by Elder Person Kohler, seconded by Elder Person Churchy, canceling the second common council meeting in December 2022.
And this is, uh, tradition that goes on for all the years I've been on the council. Uh, Dennis, how about you? I mean, do you remember when that started? Did that predate you?
Well, before my time.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
It's been a long time.
Well, given that, all those in favor of canceling the second Aldermanic or city council meeting on, uh, December of 2022, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, now have the mayor's report. I just wanted to thank everybody, uh, for coming to, oh, actually, we have appearances and citizen comments from our vast studio audience. Anybody wishing to come up and say hi, uh, to the city council, have anything to address, please feel free to come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you get three glorious minutes. Anybody? Third call? Okay, now we go to item number seven, mayor's report. Again, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out to the Christmas parade. That was one of the best, most well-attended parades I've ever seen, considering that two days before, it was 70 degrees, and, uh, by the time that parade was finishing, it was snowing at a pretty good clip, uh, two days later. I was phenomenally impressed. Uh, people were asking me why I had to scoot out, I was in a yellow hot rod, and had to scoot out and then scoot back into the parade, uh, toward the beginning, and that's because it was overheating, because the engine was so big, it was like dashing through the snow, and a 400 horsepower open slant, big blower sticking out the top of it. It was a lot of fun, uh, but I, we did have to drive around in order to cool the engine off, and then we managed to join toward the beginning, so that was it. And, uh, wanted to thank, uh, Alder Person Kohler for representing the city council. I know there were people working out of town, and there were a lot of busy weekend, but yours, uh, was, and you brought your beautiful wife, Ellen, with you, which was great, and had a, a truck from the utility committee.
Yes, the utility, uh, group, I just wanted to give a big, big shout out to them. Uh, this was nice and sparkly clean, uh, I think it was Scott Sauer, uh, was my contact there. He made sure that everything was lined up for us. Um, Dennis, the magnets work great, so I would say buy a Chevy not a Ford.
Very good.
It was a good time at the parade.
It was a great time at the parade, and I think, I thank the, the, the boys at the, um, uh, the people over at the utility group to help us get their, our equipment together, as well as they were in the parade, too. I got lucky to be in, uh, position 11, and they were in 66, so, um...
Worked out.
Yeah, worked out really nice.
You were right behind me, which is why I had a sign available on my hot rod, which was not a metal body, so that, that worked out extraordinarily well, too.
Yeah, we used, we used your, um, your tie-up there, Dennis, for, um, for the mayor's, um, uh, signs. It didn't work on, on the hot rod, so...
All right, got it. Excellent.
Yep.
Yes, we had, uh, wanted to thank my son-in-law, Patrick, for driving me around, of course, my sweet little dog, Baji, who always wears her antlers during the parade, which is a nice thing, and for Patrick's Uncle Frank. So thanks, Uncle Frank, from Erin, uh, who lent us the hot rod, which I think was, uh, went over pretty well. But it was extraordinarily well-attended. Uh, it really does go to show the Christmas spirit coming out, and, uh, I think that we're going to have a wonderful holiday season. So, wonderful things. Uh, Aldermanic requests, President Hegi.
Yes, I just want to point out that I'm attending by Zoom, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Uh, up until a few years ago, we had no way of doing that. This is really helpful. Basically, I'm just, uh, social distancing, because I haven't been feeling real good, and I wanted to make sure I don't catch anything or pass anything around. Doing well, and I'll just pass that forward. So, thanks for this opportunity.
You bet. We'll send you the bill.
Very well.
We had to prove that a unanimous consent agenda.
Oh, yeah. That's good. Okay, we have, uh, Alder Person Rusniak.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Alder Person Carroll.
Nothing, nightmare.
Alder Person Garza.
Um, yeah, just, uh, been walking around downtown a lot, and I noticed our beautiful sidewalk is not as beautiful as it used to be. There's a lot of cracks, and I think this winter, if things go as usual, I think, uh, we'll need to take a look at repairing our downtown sidewalks. Just want somebody to look into it.
Okay. Alder Person, oh, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Alder Person Churchy.
Nothing, tonight, mayor.
Alder Person Webb.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, uh, everybody that came out and voted, um, on Tuesday, uh, regardless of who you voted for, to participate in the election process, and also to everybody that, uh, worked, uh, to support the election, um, um, here in Hartford.
Alder Person Kohler.
Um, just to tag on to the, uh, Christmas, uh, parade, uh, the folks who put that together, I think did an outstanding job. Lot of work, a lot of prep work to get that together. Um, we had a great time, we had a great, great group, but, um, I want to give a big thanks to those as well that put that together. Um, awesome time, and I, I appreciate it, even though the police officers out there, um, keeping us safe during it, so thank you very much.
Alder Person Phillip.
Nothing, tonight, mayor, thank you.
Okay, one other quick thing is, uh, thanks to all those who showed up at the Lions Club Pancake Breakfast. That was a wonderful thing. Uh, big crowd, was very impressed by the number of, uh, folks that showed up. Uh, don't forget the Lions Calendars, which are now available, so anybody who wants to buy a Lions Calendar. I only sell the winners, by the way. Uh, just so you are aware, we do have those, there's a drawing every month. All the money stays, uh, within the community, which is a nice thing about the Lions. So, thank you for all of those people who worked, uh, that group. Uh, and with that, we will go to our public hearing. We have a 2023 budget hearing. I'd like to open the hearing and ask for a reading of the notice.
Notice is hereby given that this Tuesday, November 15th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the city hall located at 109 North Main Street, the common council of the city of Hartford will hold the public hearing on the proposed 2023 budget. The proposed budget in detail is available for inspection at the city clerk's office from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday.
Thank you very much. Next explanation of hearing by staff. I'm going to guess this will be taken by our city administrator, Steve Volker.
Um, thank you, mayor. The, uh, 2023 budget that was presented to you at the previous meeting, um, was slightly tweaked from what you originally looked at and approved for, uh, publication. Uh, the mayor and I had met, uh, about, uh, reducing some of our, our expected budget for debt, and we were able to do so. Um, so the total levy is what is spelled out tonight, um, approved, uh, for, for your approval. Uh, again, the total levy, uh, for 2023 is $8,503,312. Um, that creates a mill rate of $4.67, which I believe I sent you all a, a running total of, when was the last time we had a $4.67 mill rate, which was never? Uh, and so that's down 22.06% for those living in the Washington County area. And for the one family who lives in Dodge County, their mill rate went from 540 down to 435. That's a 19.47% decrease in the mill rate. Now, again, not to, you know, uh, blow a bunch of hot air, is the fact of, of course, it has to do, the, the, the mill rate so dramatically goes down whenever you do a revale. The last total revale we did was in 2014, um, and so this, it's been, um, that many years since we have had this much of, uh, an impact on our mill rate. Um, and actually, as the, as the sheet showed, um, that I sent to you before, as far as the mill rate goes, um, uh, the last time we had this, this much of a decrease was in that 2014 area. So, again, uh, based on how much your property went up in assessed value, uh, we'll base what happens to your tax rate. So, your overall taxes you pay is either going to be going up or down based on it, that 22.06% for those living in Washington County. So, um, again, I can't tell you what your rate's going to be for the, the school district, uh, the university, or the college, I should say, um, for, uh, the county or, um, the school district. Uh, but again, this has only to do with your municipal portion of the, um, tax rate. Any questions?
Okay, i- if not, then we're looking for appearances for. Anybody wishing to appear, uh, for, or in support of the budget that the common council is about to vote on? Anybody appearances for? Last call, appearances for. Hearing none, we'll go appearances against. Anybody wishing to appear against the budget, or any part of the budget for the 2023, uh, hearing that we're having now? Anybody against? Third call, anybody against? Hearing none, discussion by council. I did want to make a point, uh, just, uh, going on Administrator Volker's, uh, uh, explanation as regards to, please understand, when, when it comes to property tax, we are about, I believe it's still 29% of the budget when you get your property taxes. We, we represent about 29%, correct?
That's the city's portion. That's correct.
There are four other taxing entities. Uh, one, of course, is the HOHS High School, because it is a union high school. The second is Joint One, which is primarily just the city of Hartford and the immediate area. Uh, the third is Washington County, and then the fourth is the, uh, Community College, which we support, Moraine Park. Uh, that will be responsible for a bump in taxes soon, because of course, we just passed a $55 million. Uh, we didn't, but the, uh, those who, those who voted for it, uh, voted for the referendum, uh, uh, put through a $55 million, uh, referendum, and that will, of course, increase taxes over time. I don't know that it'll hit this coming bill, but, uh, by next year, I'm sure that they'll be starting to spend it. Just so you're aware of what's happening with your taxes, uh, we're just the fun people through our city clerk, Lori Hetzel, to, uh, we get to mail it out. So, it comes in a, uh, an envelope from the city, but realize we are actually less than a third of that bill. But again, I'm responsible for mailing it to the people of the city of Hartford. So, with that, uh, we have gone appearances for and against. Any discussion by council? Go ahead, Alder Person Rusniak.
What I thought was interesting when Steve gave us that chart on mill rate, the mill rate this year is $4.67. In 1987, it was $10.19. That's quite a dramatic change from 87, $10.19 to $4.67. That's a testament to our administrator, our department heads, our mayor, and of course, us on the council.
Yes.
So, we've done, everybody's done a fine job.
I wasn't on the council then, so I can't.
It was I.
Dennis?
I was not. Not that far back.
$10.67.
Dennis, I don't want to miss you. I'm, I'm just going to go to you right away. Did you have anything you wanted to bring up as regards, and then I'll, I'll keep going around the horn to ask, but, uh...
No, we're, we're doing fine. I'm in support, and, uh, I'm expecting, because I've had things done to my home, that I will probably face a tax increase. So, uh, we're not going to be necessarily beneficiaries from this, or at least I'm not. I believe I will have a tax increase based on my assessment. So, everyone that has a, a level tax or decrease, I did not. So, only comment.
Couldn't happen to a nicer guy.
Thank you.
Just going to say that.
Okay, that's funny. Any other discussion? Okay, at that, we will close the hearing and ask for action on, uh, the Resolution 3639, a resolution adopting the necessary funds for the year 2023 and establishing the general property tax. Motion approved, uh, Alder Person Churchy, seconded by Alder Person Rusniak.
Motion by Elder Person Churchy, seconded by Elder Person Rusniak for the adoption of proposed Resolution 3639.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Motion carried. Second, the second part, Resolution 3640, a resolution adopting the school budget and authorizing and directing the city clerk to spread same upon the tax roll of the city of Hartford. So, for the school, that would be Alder Person Carroll, seconded by Alder Person Phillip.
Motion by Elder Person Carroll, seconded by Elder Person Phillip for the adoption of proposed Resolution 3640.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
It talks about just the school, but don't we do all the other three? Doesn't it mean all the other three? The other, the both schools, the, uh...
Oh, you're thinking of...
Marine Park and...
And the county.
And the county? I mean, isn't it all of them? Even though it doesn't really say that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. No worries. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Motion carried. Standing committee reports, finance and personnel, Chairman Rusniak.
One item tonight, discussion and consideration of authorizing appropriate city officials to use undesignated fund balance for the Centennial Park redevelopment up to an additional $141,750 in order to further complete construction to meet the terms of the W DNR stewardship grant and private donations. Steve and Randy?
I will start with it. Again, um, at a previous, uh, city council meeting, saying also park, uh, and rec board meetings, uh, we've talked about this project, which again has been on the books now for four years, uh, and is finally coming, um, to the light at the end of the tunnel. Um, in, with the inflation of so many of the building materials and things that have found, been found out about the, um, park itself, um, again, our costs have gone up dramatically over what was originally budgeted. Because of that, um, we came to this council to approve, uh, a budget of $1.5 million, um, with Wonder Construction, um, which is, uh, as Alder Person Rusniak mentioned, is our local contractor. Um, and anyways, um, but to make it under the 1.5 original budget, we did have to pull a few things out, and when, upon doing that, the mayor had mentioned the fact of if there was additional things that were pulled out of the original project to, that, that he would welcome us to bring them back and ask for fund balance to use towards this. And so, we have done exactly what the mayor always says, because that's what we do here. And, um, anyways, so, we are presenting, um, a, a couple of lists of items, uh, in which, again, were pulled out of the budget, uh, because of the restricted funds, and ask that some of the unfunded, undesigned fund balance be used for that, a total figure of not to exceed $141,750. And to tell you more about that is our parking rec director, Randy Witacik.
Um, it was 1.6 million, that was.
Oh, that's true.
I didn't want to forget about that extra $100,000. Um, so as Steve referenced before, uh, at the 1.6 number, we needed to pull out certain amenities, uh, from the park plan, uh, including the playground fencing, fencing that would have went around the playground, uh, to deter children from going to railroad tracks, uh, going to the pond, uh, updates the existing shelter, uh, the open shelter that is currently there, um, as well as some of the alternative bids, uh, which all of them, almost all of them had donations attached to them, uh, including, uh, the 10-foot wide accessible asphalt pathway, uh, the ADA fishing pier, and the boullard lighting that would have gone along, uh, the, uh, the asphalt path. These are all items that would now be able to go in with the extra $141,000.
Any questions or comments for these gentlemen? Justin?
So, are, I know you're talking about, like, paying us back if we get additional donations. I think we talked about, like, at the last meeting, like, potentially trying to raise, like, awareness of, like, you know, the, the availability of donating, so that, like, potentially we could get more. There are, like, efforts to try and get the word out on that?
Um, I'll add to what Randy was about to say before I cut him off. Uh, yes, so, uh, again, we originally did a, a major campaign, you probably remember, about 18 months ago, of which we received, uh, quite a few funds from many organizations and businesses in the area. Um, we have believed that at that time, based on that, and also the other funding we're receiving from the DNR, uh, from the stewardship grant, uh, along with the CDBG money, Community Development Block grant money, um, and other, um, funding sources, that we would have enough money. Um, but we are going to take that back to the streets, so to speak, um, and let them know of the availability of certain, uh, aspects of this plan. Uh, one such, um, portion of it is, uh, the, the back half, or actually, some would consider it the front half of the new pavilion building, which is a three-seasons room, along with a staging area. Uh, the, the, the part that will be the staging area already has a, a sponsor, um, and now we're looking for a sponsor for the other half. Um, but we have other, uh, things also that can be, um, purchased, um, through donations. So, we have been talking, uh, Randy has been talking with a couple of, uh, families, uh, that have shown interest, um, along with businesses that have shown interest, and so, uh, we will, um, s- like I said, take that back to the streets and see if we can, uh, get enough money to, now they cover this, but I mean, it'd be nice to have a little bit of money left over, because all this money is also pulling funds from the park fund. Uh, so, when we have an improvement to a park, we use the park funds that are used from development. Um, this is going to relatively wipe us out, um, this project, so we'd love to have some money left over for other projects like the, uh, the, the Churchy Park, uh, located behind this house, so...
I'll be retired and move to Florida by the time we get that one done.
So, if somebody wants to get involved and donate, who should they reach out to?
Absolutely, reach out to Randy, uh, at the parking rec, uh, department, and Randy would love to sit down with them and, and show them what's available and, and, and how they can get a part of it. And also, uh, as mentioned in the, uh, prior meeting, um, how they can be, um, uh, notarized, recognized for their contribution if they so choose to. But if you want to send us a check and we'll, and keep it anonymous, we'd be glad to do so.
Um, and I did reach out to the local paper after the, the last council meeting as well, just reiterating where we're at, staying these very facts, letting people know, um, there's a shortage, and we welcome anybody that wanted to, to speak with us.
Okay, thank you.
And once people see this project developing, you're going to get some more donations coming in. I mean, it looks better today than it did three weeks ago, and it was raining three inches a day. So, people want to donate to things they can see, and now you can see what's happening out there. Tony?
Yeah, I'm totally in favor of this, um, 'cause, one thing, projects, you know, we, we get them designed so that we got a better quality of life, and you start picking things away. You know, you're, you're picking away from that opportunity of having better equipment, better, better stuff. And so, I look, look forward to saying yes to this, um, with the, uh, also the opportunity for the public or industry to come in and donate and help out with, uh, sponsoring things, so...
Alder Person... Wayne?
Yeah, and the last thing I'll say is, you know, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it. You know, we're always trying to keep stuff downtown, keep our downtown lively. We put a lot of time and effort into it. And even though this isn't on Main Street, it's right next to it, and it's right there. A lot of people use Fourth Street. I look at you, because you have that complaint with the union in Fourth Street, but, and they drive right by the park. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a great thing. I'm looking forward to it. Um, I missed this year seeing some of the lights on that side of the street. They got the Christmas lights. They decorated the other side now really nice, so maybe next year we'll have both sides, so...
I'm very excited to see what VBH, uh, the beautification committee does next year when they have the, the entire park.
Yeah, I think this is just something that's going to keep our downtown vibrant, so...
Sure.
So, Wayne?
Comments?
Wayne?
Yes, Dennis?
Yeah, uh, I'm going to make a comment on this. I believe the stewardship fund actually got held up for about a year. So, had this gone forward a year ago, we probably wouldn't even be at this point where we'd be having a little bit of a shortfall here, uh, because the cost of everything went up so much in the past year. Correct me if I'm wrong with that, uh...
That was actually two years. That was two years that was held up.
Okay, well, in two years, things changed dramatically, and we could have had this all done, but, um, because of various forces that were holding back and not in the city, uh, it didn't get approved to really help us out that much better. So, unless I'm mistaken with that, but, uh, I think that's the way it actually occurred.
Actually, the original DNR grant was for $880,000, and we ended up with $350,000.
All right, great. So, not only did we get less, but it got delayed besides. So, thank you, DNR.
That and the airport, boy, I tell you, we got... That and O for two.
Don't go there.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? If not, back to you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Would look for a motion to approve the, uh, uh, undesigned fund balance in the amount of $141,750. Uh, are you waiving, or are you...
I'm, I'm making a motion to approve.
Making a motion to approve. And, uh, just a second.
Motion by Elder Person Phillip, seconded by Elder Person Webb, authorizing appropriate city officials to use undesigned fund balance for the Centennial Park redevelopment up to an additional $141,750 in order to further complete construction to meet the terms of the W DNR stewardship grant and private donations.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Motion carried. Thank you. Skipping through Public Works and Utility down to Resolutions and Possible Action, Resolution 3641, a preliminary resolution, levying weights and measures assessments for the period of July 2021 to June 2022. Uh, are those correct dates?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. And, uh, this is, uh, an annual thing that we do, correct? As far as I know, that's, uh, something that's rather a perfunctory task, so, um, would look for a motion to approve, uh, Alder Person Churchy, seconded by Alder Person Phillip.
Motion by Elder Person Churchy, seconded by Elder Person Phillip for the adoption of proposed Resolution 3641.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Motion carried. We don't have anything but a German. I did want to make, uh, one last comment, and this is the first year after many I heard, uh, Alder Person Garza talking. You were thinking of doing it this year. Yes, I'm actually doing the No Shave November, so I'm getting a little scruffy. I had, it's my, my want to look like Alder Person Phillip or our city administrator, so, uh...
Recognition of Men's Health, mayor.
Thank you very much. Let you know. Okay, for adjournment, Alder Person Carroll, seconded by Alder Person Phillip.
Motion by Elder Person Carroll, seconded by Elder Person Phillip for adjournment at 7:29.
Another half an hour. Thank you very much. For adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed no. We stand adjourned. Thank you.